Good evening, everybody. As many of you may or may not know, the Board and the community suffered a great loss this past week with the passing of Marie Anne Frank. So I would just ask us all to stand up for a quick moment of silence. May I have a motion to enter public session?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
A motion has been made by Ms. Grosso and seconded by Mr. Dambola. Upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Caldo West Call of Education, we will return to public session at approximately 7:04 PM.
Okay. Eyes?
Eyes.
Nays? Abstentions? Motion carried, four zero.
Thank you. Brian, do you have any communication?
There's none.
Thank you. Dr. Conklin, Superintendent's report?
Board President, we have a young man in the audience that I'd like you to recognize for his Eagle Scout Award.
Great. I ask Sean Payne to please come up.
Hi, everybody. My name is Sean Payne. I'm a Boy Scout, or Eagle Scout now, with Troop Six, and I'm currently a senior at James Caldo High School. Today, first, I want to appreciate and thank Dr. Conklin and the Board of Education, as well as Don Stevens, Mr. Schlegel, and the rest of the Troop Six, West Caldo Troops Six, in helping me, or helping me with my Eagle Scout project. So today, as I discuss my Eagle Scout project, I'm going to discuss a little bit about why I chose to, why I chose my Eagle Scout project, and a little bit about it, so conducting, and proposing, and finishing. So, it all started back a few months ago. Around May, I started, and, or I began, and I conducted my Eagle Scout project. And a little bit, what I want to discuss is, first, why I wanted to refurbish and rejuvenate the rec center at Grover Cleveland Park. So, one day, I was, I was walking by, and I kind of, I was, I was looking at the park, and I was looking at all of the different aspects, the lake, or, sorry, the pond, the baseball fields, the playground, and I saw next to the playground was the recreation center, the horseshoe pits, the shuffleboard court, the bocce ball courts, and the surrounding area. And I thought, how is it possible that we can have such a nice playground, but this area over here is just completely neglected? So that's why I chose to kind of take charge and begin my Eagle Scout project. In this project, it took about two hundred-plus man-hours, and I had to raise about $1,000. And in this project, I had to, I had to sand, power wash, and lacquer the benches and the bocce ball courts. I also had to power wash and repaint the shuffleboard courts. I had to re, rip out the back of the horseshoe pits, put in new sand, and stain that, the new backboard of the horseshoe pits. And I had to rake up and blow dry, or, sorry, leaf blow all of the surrounding area to make it look nice. So, I'm really glad that you had me here tonight, and I really, I hope to see you guys all there, playing some bocce ball courts with your families. And I also wanted to say I'm sorry for this haircut. It's a, I had a mohawk, because my, my soccer team made it to the semifinals, and we had to get mohawks for the, for, as varsity players. So that's pretty much it. Thank you.
So, we have a resolution, which I would love to read.
Sure.
And then we can probably take some photos. But this is a special honor for me to do this, like, known Sean has probably helped this. And for those who haven't gone to the park, I'm there every day walking the dog. The area that Sean has redone looks awesome, so please encourage you to go do it, and go enjoy it, because he did a phenomenal job.
Thank you.
So, Sean, let me read this to you. This is from the Caldo West Call of Education Resolution honoring Sean Payne. Whereas Sean Payne has earned the rank of Eagle Scout, Scout's highest award, and whereas Sean Payne has demonstrated individuality in designing and providing the leadership to create the service project necessary to attain Eagle Scout, Scout, Eagle Scout status, and whereas the Eagle Scout Challenge embodies the highest ideals of honor, loyalty, courage, leadership, and service embraced by the Caldo West Call of Public Schools, and whereas Sean Payne has exemplified these ideals as a student and member of the community, therefore be it resolved that the Caldo West Call of Education takes great pride in recognizing and commending Sean Payne for this achievement on the 8th day of November 2021. Can we just take a break, just for a quick, just take a few minute break?
Yeah.
I make a motion to accept this resolution. Yes. So I have a second.
I'll second it.
Okay. Votes?
Eyes?
Eyes.
Nays? Abstentions? Motion carried.
Right. And can I have approval of, a motion to approve the public conference meeting minutes and executive session minutes of October 11th, 2021, and the regular public monthly meeting minutes and executive session minutes of October 18th, 2021?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Great. Brian, please take the roll.
Sure. Mr. Dambola?
Yes.
Mr. Elko?
Yes.
Ms. Grosso?
Yes.
Mr. Cipollatti?
Yes.
Four zero, motion carried.
Thank you. And for committee reports, Mr. Elko?
Thank you. So, on October 26th, at 10:00 AM, the Finance and Facilities Committee met at around 10:00 AM at Harrison School. Present for the meeting were the Board President, Dan Cipollatti, myself, Superintendent Chris Conklin, Assistant Superintendent Caitlin Jones, and Business Administrator Brian McCarthy. Among the items discussed included the fiscal year 2023 budget calendar, which the administration is looking to adjust slightly by setting some earlier deadlines than we had in previous years. The committee also discussed the district's annual comprehensive maintenance plan and the annual maintenance budget amount worksheet. These are documents that are required by law and collectively known as a CMP M1. The committee reviewed the receipt of grants related to the American Rescue Plan, ARP, and the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, IDEA, including amounts carried over to this year from the prior year. The committee discussed how best to assist with the formal establishment of the seven HSA organizations district-wide, as well as the costs related to supporting those organizations with resources like QuickBooks software and auditing services. The superintendent raised the potential for hiring five additional special education teachers, as well as an additional physical education teacher and an additional ESL teacher for the fiscal year 2022. And finally, the committee discussed the creation of an HR manager position, which is on the agenda for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Elko. Good, now we're going to go into public comments on the agenda, and their agenda item only, please. Public participation shall be governed by the following. Participants must be recognized by the presiding officer and must preference their comments by an announcement of their name and address. Statements are to be limited to three minutes' duration and may only address items on the agenda. Participants may speak no more than once on the same topic until all others who wish to speak on that topic have been heard, and all statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. If you do have any questions or comments, please do come up to the microphone. Any questions or comments?
This is now for the questions?
I'm sorry?
This is now for the questions?
Yes, for items on the agenda. Anything that's not on the agenda, if you have questions, we will hold to the end of the meeting?
Okay.
Okay. If not, I think we do have a presentation today within curriculum, so we're going to shift to that, and then we'll continue on the agenda.
hear about our CWC Fall Data Summary and Presentation this evening. I'm Caitlin Jones, the Assistant Superintendent, for those I haven't met yet, and I'm here with my team members, Alina Jacobs, our Director of Elementary Education, and Elizabeth Fisher, our Director of Secondary Education. Before we dig into some of the specifics for tonight's presentation, we wanted to make sure to establish some shared vocabulary, as you'll be hearing about assessments, some new, some that you've seen before. And it's important to know the purpose behind each of the assessments. There will be an information session after this for anybody who wants to sort of get into the nitty-gritty of specific assessments, so we welcome you to stay afterwards. But for the purposes today, it's helpful to know that there are three major types of assessment in general. You can think about it, about before learning, during learning, and after learning. So you'll see diagnostic, assessment prior to learning. Some of the examples you're going to hear about tonight are intended to actually preview for us what our children currently know, but they haven't actually been taught that yet. So you might hear that with Linkit, some of our benchmark assessment platform, where there are three different administrations. The Linkit Form A that your children just recently took are actually an assessment of content that hasn't been taught yet. So it's diagnostic. It's intended to help teachers really understand what kids are coming into the school year already knowing. Other examples are pre-assessments, running records, and reading. They really help us to understand trends before the school year even begins. Formative assessments are known to be assessments for learning within an instructional period. So when you hear later on in the year, around December, January, Linkit Form B, that's where we're actually measuring progress after some of the learning has been taught. It's progress towards end-of-year standards. Other examples include quizzes, exit tickets, midterms, those sorts of assessments. And then finally, summative is what most of us are familiar with by way of PARC or NJSLA. This year, Start Strong data, which really measures mastery of student learning after instruction has taken place. And so, as we go through, I just thought it was important for us to have a shared vocabulary around the different kinds of assessment, all of which are used to really analyze student progress, student learning, and ways that we can continuously meet the needs of all of our students. You'll hear now about our elementary data, followed by our secondary.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Alina Jacobs, and I'm the Director of Elementary Education. I'm looking forward to sharing with you a bit of an overview of our fall data. So for our first slide, we'll talk about our math fall student results. As you'll see here, Start Strong doesn't test third grade. We did, however, administer Linkit Form C at the end of last year, so we do have some information about how our kids are doing at the end of, at the end of last year's standards. As Ms. Jones mentioned earlier, Start Strong tests us on prior grade standards. Form A from Linkit tests us on this year's end-of-year standards, content we haven't yet taught. Both Start Strong and Form A enable us to know immediately where our students are, and we're not going to wait until the end of the year to provide them with the support they might need. As we took a look at the actual standards that were more difficult for kids, this slide has a lot of information. I'm not going to read it to you, but you can see some of the specific content that comes up as being more difficult for students. The trends that our students need ongoing support with are fractions, word problems, and multiplication and division, which is part of our new three-five math program. So this year, to support math instruction, we have our new Investigations 3 Math Curriculum. In 2018, 2019, a committee of teachers, parents, and administrators selected Investigations 3, and we have launched the program this year. Investigations was selected based on its alignment to the standards, opportunities for differentiation, increased rigor, hands-on learning opportunities, and quality tech resources. In addition, in our curriculum and pacing guides, we have some flex times. We have opportunities to pre-teach or reteach within any unit. Also new this year is the, we call it the IDEA period. It's called the Individualized Differentiated Educational Activities Period. This takes place four times a week, about, for 30 minutes, and it's time at the elementary level for additional small group instruction, whether that's remediation, whether that's enrichment. It's about providing kids whatever they need. In January, as Ms. Jones mentioned, we'll be doing Linkit Form B, which will give us a good sense of how our kids are progressing according to grade level standards. And we'll be putting those results in the student portal and letting you know when they're there. So for ELA, again, just like in math, third grade does not get tested for Start Strong. But we did, again, also administer Form C at the end of second grade. So our Start Strong assessment results tell us how kids did on prior grade level standards. So Start Strong is identifying for us the foundational skills we need to work on. Individual student ISRs, or individual student reports, will be shared home with families in December. So again, for ELA, when we took a look at our results and drilled down to figure out what do our kids need more support in, you can see here some of the, some of the bold text central message theme summarizing. An example of a grade four question around theme would be when kids have to read a passage and answer the question, which statement best expresses the theme of Troll and Dragon, for example. So NJSLA and Linkit include grade-level reading passages. We know that students who read on grade level have a better chance of accessing texts across all content areas, including science, social studies, and math. All of our elementary schools have building-based goals this year around bringing students who are reading below grade level closer to grade level by accelerating their progress. So as part of our strategy to meet, as part of our strategy to meet our teaching and learning goals, teachers are implementing evidence-based reading strategies and instructional models such as guided reading, foundations, mind play, and phonics first. All of our K3 teachers now use an Orton-Gillingham-based program called Foundations as a primary curriculum for teaching phonics, word study, including handwriting and spelling. But to support students who need additional targeted small group phonics instruction, we have layered in another Orton-Gillingham program called Phonics First. By the end of October, all of our academic interventionists, our K2 classroom teachers, our K5 special education teachers, and our ESL teachers were trained in Phonics First, and they use it as deemed appropriate for classroom-based small group instruction. We are also offering SMART Support this fall. Information's coming soon from building principals, and we are providing early intervention in reading for our first, second, and third grade students, who are three or more levels below reading level for the fall benchmark assessment.
Hi, my name's Elizabeth Fisher, and I'm going to share some information regarding the secondary schools, middle school, and the high school with similar data that Ms. Jacobs just shared. Starting with our science, Start Strong assessed our grade six, our grade nine, and our grade 12 students in science. One of the things that was a little bit hard about remote learning was the opportunity to really do experiential science and perform labs, which is something that we were really prioritizing in our science classes this fall, giving the students the opportunity, because that is really one of the major ways that we can meet the standards set by the Next Gen Science Standards. Specifically for the middle school, we have some information, again. Start Strong is assessing the students' prior grade level standards, and Linkit is assessing the current end-of-year grade level standards. When we take a look at this, both Start Strong and Form A give us those immediate results, which allow us to really teach into the needs of our students and meet them where they're at now and support them all year instead of finding this out towards the end of the school year. Some of the things that we've realized are trends in what our students need support in are fractions, real-world math applications, and also equations with different forms and variables. Some of these are being re-taught at the beginning of school year as prerequisite skills that really need to be reinforced, and then by unit are being re-taught and reinforced by the teachers. For ELA, as Ms. Jacobs mentioned, the middle school is partnering with the elementary schools to continue really focusing on our students' reading levels, and we assess the students with their TC running records at the beginning of the school year, and we are making sure that we are really continuing that work, because the passages for Start Strong and Linkit and all of our standards-based assessments are on grade level. We want to really make sure that we're helping our students not only become at grade level, but really accelerate into that, into those standards. Some of the standards that we need the most support around are citing textual evidence, analyzing how a story develops over time, and also thinking about an author's point of view and how they're crafting that text. At the middle school specifically, we are really sharing a lot of that information with our science and social studies teachers, because having them really focus on literacy within their classes, especially around informational tech standards, is really going to help support a much richer experience for the students. We also are continuing the guided reading program in grade six to help support those foundational skills and using small group instruction. For math specifically, they implemented a big ideas math curriculum, which was selective last year during remote learning, but this is the first year where it's going to be fully in-person, students really being able to use mitigatives, and really work with the teacher in those smaller targeted groups, which we're really excited about. Also, our Algebra I teachers are working with the high school teachers to really have the coherence over the Algebra I curriculum. We're also continuing the SMART Support Program, which was started at the middle school, and housing it before and after school, and utilizing that additional information that we have of all these different data points to really target students that we think that would have the most success with that type of program. For the high school, we have our Start Strong and Linkit data for our math students. Again, we have this as being predictive of what the end-of-year standards are. For high school math, the math changes and the standards become very specific because it's a much higher level. So when you look at Linkit Form A, that's math the students have not been exposed to yet. So as the year goes on, and we start to look at Linkit Form B, when they've actually been taught some of those standards and some of that information, and then Linkit Form C, we would see most likely progress towards those standards and a mastery of those standards, but the students have not been exposed to this type of math previously. Similarly, though, when we see some of the target standards that we really want to take a look at, it does go back to some of those foundational skills of equations with different forms, especially with variables, and really solving real-world math problems. So there's some of the things that our math teachers are also keeping in mind as they're teaching those higher-level standards. For ELA, just like in grade three, Start Strong did not assess our grade 11 students, but they did take Linkit Form C last year, so we have a good idea of where they're starting off as well with those foundational skills and moving into grade 11. With the standards, the standards are very similar for each grade level, but really what they're looking at is the text and how challenging the text gets from grade nine, 10, and 11, and how students are really attacking that text. So things that we're really looking at are citing strong textual evidence, looking at how an author, again, develops the story or develops the argument over a text, and really thinking about our inferences that come from that and the development. As with our middle school teachers, our science and social studies teachers have really been sharing all of the informational tech standards that apply to their content areas so that they can also support that growth and development. Our ELA and our math teachers, as well as our science and social studies teachers, have really been looking at their assessments, reviewing them, revising them as necessary to increase rigor and to make sure that they are aligned with the standards so that we can support our students' success on some of these other assessments. Our math teachers have also been working with an expert consultant that has come in to work with them on some professional development to help align our curriculum and some of the resources that we've been utilizing, as well as that collaboration with the Algebra I to provide coherence between the middle school and the high school. The high school's also exploring SMART Support and seeing how we can do it before, after school, or use that Common Launch Period to really target some students that might need some extra support. And then also in December, when we get the PSAT scores back, we'll look at how that data targeted with Khan Academy can really help support our students with their different ELA and math areas of growth. That's what we have for you tonight. Again, as we mentioned, that there's going to be an additional webinar later at 8 o'clock for people who really want to dig deep into more information about Linkit and the reports that you might have seen with your students specifically, but if there's any questions, we can take them now, too.
Could you jump back to slide number 14? I just want to make sure that's not a typo, because it's 48, 46, for 90 grades.
Four. It is not a typo.
So what do we think happened there?
So, really what happens at the eighth-grade level is we have around 70 students taking the Algebra I, and that is deemed by different factors for students that are, they take, we looked at their Linkit Form C, their classroom recommendation, their grades, that they're prepared to move on to that, this high school course, the Algebra I course. The eighth-grade students that have not taken that Algebra I or that are not on track to be really prepared for the Algebra I, saying grade eight math, and we're seeing that their foundational skills are a little bit less with math there.
So these are kids who are taking not Algebra I, they're taking regular math?
Grade eight math, yes.
So, and then can you flip to number 20?
I'm sorry. I want to write.
I mean, I understand these are diagnostic, which means, right, we're testing them on a language they haven't been taught yet.
Yes.
Right? So they're going to be low. But a lot of these are more 30, 40 across the board, and this was another one where we got really, really low. Is there, I guess, we have a long way to go, right?
We have a long way to go, yes.
Is there any way for parents to effectively track this progress or make sure that their, their kids are in real time getting what they need, other than having to wait for report cards or progress reports or anything else? Like, how can we, how can the parents help this process along?
So there's our, so that, like, so Khan Academy, which is a separate online support the reports that you might have seen with your students specifically, but if there's any questions, we can take them now, too.
Could you jump back to slide number fourteen? I just want to make sure that's not a typo, because it's forty-eight, forty-six, four, ninety-three.
Four. It is not a typo.
So what do we think happened there?
So really what happens at the eighth-grade level is we have around seventy students taking the Algebra I, and that is deemed by different factors for students that are, they take, we looked at their Linkit Form C, their classroom recommendation, their grades, that they're prepared to move on to that, this high school course, the Algebra I course. The eighth-grade students that have not taken that Algebra I, or that are not on track to be really prepared for Algebra I, stay in grade eight math, and we're seeing that their foundational skills are a little bit less with math there.
So these are kids who are taking not Algebra I, they're taking regular math?
Grade eight math, yes.
So, and then can you flip to number twenty?
I'm sorry, I want to write.
I understand these are diagnostic, which means, right, we're testing them on a language they haven't been taught yet.
Yes.
Right? So they're going to be low. But a lot of these are more thirty, forty across the board, and this was another one where we got really, really low. Is there, I guess, we have a long way to go, right?
We have a long way to go, yes.
Is there any way for parents to effectively track this progress, or make sure that their kids are in real time getting what they need, other than having to wait for report cards or progress reports or anything else? Like, how can we, how can the parents help this process along?
So there's our, so that, like, so Khan Academy, which is a separate online support system, will be able to take what the students did specifically on their PSATs, the teachers can provide feedback as well, and then it gives them, like, targeted support, and then there's performance reports that come out of that. So there's types of systems like that. Our formative data that teachers can put in through Genesis is a way for parents to see, but for, to see it as holistically with all of these standards, it wouldn't be till Linkit Form B that they would necessarily see that, or like the midterm on a range of standards like this. So they would be able to see more progress towards a units worth of standards, which are going to be much more compact than seeing the standards for the whole year. Does that make sense? So it is a little bit harder.
I think more immediacy, sorry to cut you off, is to be in touch with their teacher. So parents should contact their child's teacher directly to get direct information on how they're doing against the standards. Or go online, we have a tool that parents can access, how students are performing. Teachers are supposed to be updating that on a weekly basis, so they could go right on to the.
So tell me more about that. Am I able to, on a weekly basis, see how my kid's progressing through?
Right, you could go on a daily basis to get that information. As long as it's being updated, then you could go see it on a daily basis.
And is it going to be updated on a weekly or daily basis?
It's supposed to be updated every time there's a new grade to be put in by the teacher, and the teacher's supposed to be putting updated grading information into the system on a regular basis.
Thank you.
So if you're not sure how to get online, you can go to our website. The process explains exactly how you have to get online to go through the parent portal to access all that, and then Linkit will be right after this.
Yep.
They're going to explain how to access all that data from Linkit, because it's actually supposed to be married to Linkit. So all that data and information is going to be available for all parents.
Okay. I'll keep my time to the folks back here.
If you have a question, come up to the microphone, please.
Hi, Liz Hart, one forty-nine, RVNAP. So just kind of following up on Mr. Alco's comments. So the grading system for my child just entered middle school is amazing, right? So to your point, Dr. Colligan, the teachers do, they add the scores in, sometimes they don't do it, you know, daily or it's weekly, but the change from elementary to middle is drastic, because in elementary, I never knew what my child was getting, and I'm a very, like, on-it parent, where, you know, I wanted to know what the scores were, and it was very rare in which we got the consistency and the feedback on the grading. So are there plans to do that at the elementary level, so that a parent can?
Yes, they're actually, Linkit is part of that plan, but part of the strategic plan is actually each teacher's supposed to come up with an individual plan, how to communicate to parents specifically how the children are performing. Guided reading isn't going to help with that information. All of that is supposed to be available to parents on a more regular basis. So the answer to that, the simple answer to that is yes.
Okay, so moving forward for anybody else that I know, my child's now in middle school, I don't have any other children, so for the rest of the elementary parents, they can expect that that sort of rigor with grading will be openly communicated back?
In the November family newsletter we shared with families, like, what information they can count on getting, being sent home, or being shared with the Linkit portal at what interval. So for example, all of our end-of-unit math assessments in grades three through five are now in Linkit for parents to access, and they're standards-aligned. And K through two are getting their assessment sent home with a cover sheet with all the ICANN math standards connected to all of the questions. So we're, we've put some steps in place this year to standardize the communication that goes home around student learning, and are exploring ways to continue to use Linkit as a way to make that communication even more instantaneous.
Okay, may I ask one more question?
Sure.
So on the slides for, because some of these numbers are, like, seemingly low, is that typical? Is that part of the norm, or is that, do we think a result of COVID and remote learning?
Some of the trends that you see tonight predate COVID, the pandemic, remote learning, and we were aware of them prior to the pandemic.
Okay.
And so that's why we had the curriculum review to select a new math program, for example, for elementary math. So some of those trends persist as one would anticipate, given the pandemic. Some have been exacerbated by it. We've worked relentlessly, despite all of it, to find additional ways to have a lens into what our kids specifically need, because honestly, Star Strong and JSLI just scraped the surface. Anybody who's looked at data, and you'll see an individual student report, you get a sense. They say a child needs less support, some support, more support.
Right.
But what we need is, like, a better understanding of what kinds of support, and how does our curriculum help meet those students' needs? How do we differentiate for groups of children, for individuals? How do we go ahead?
I've said go on forward. So one of the important things is to really focus less on the percentile on the right-hand side, and look at the trends, and you'll see a lot of overlapping skills that kids need as they transition from Algebra I to Geometry Algebra II. Those foundational skills is what we're kind of talking about here. How do we ensure that they are embedded in the instruction that's going on in second grade to third grade to fourth grade to fifth grade? Because you would expect to see the Linkit side, which is the pre-assessment, to be higher scores. You wouldn't expect to see a hundred percent.
Right.
You'd expect to see twenty-five percent, because a quarter of that foundation should have been taught in the previous school year. As a student progressive, you build on that. So at the end, you're at a hundred percent. The problem is, we're missing that foundation. Now, some of it could be remote instruction, but there was a trend that was trending downward, especially in the math area. And some of that is the alignment, that the curriculum wasn't directly aligned, the program wasn't directly aligned. So all of that is kind of being addressed now with the new programs, but it's just going to be a matter of time before we kind of have that, the evidence of the change.
And these are, to your question, like, are these, are we seeing these in other districts across the country? There are a lot of articles, even today, and Edweek, they posted an article about how do you look at student performance data in the midst of a pandemic and know what to do with that exactly? Luckily, we were looking at all of these data sources prior, and one of the major pieces in our theory of action is that if we provide evidence-based reading instruction for our children at the youngest level possible, we know that over time, that's going to allow for them to have great gains, not just in ELA, but in math and science. Some of the data that you're seeing in math and science, we really do know, are issues of literacy. And so with Phonics First being rolled out, with Foundations, which we had already had, but we're really providing training and support for teachers, we really feel confident that it might not be overnight that we see leaps and bounds, but we're very confident in the strategic plan and the goals that we have for the five-year plan, that we'll get there. Our teachers are working really, really hard towards those goals.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Hi, how are you? This is work with seven hundred field app. I have a couple of questions. How often are you giving these assessments?
So the Linkit is three times a year.
Okay.
Running records have been rolled out this year, and they just finished their beginning-of-the-year assessment administration. They'll be doing it two more times throughout the year, and for some students who are really struggling with that?
No, go to slide one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I don't want to interrupt.
No, it's okay. He's helping me get to the right slide. Thank you.
Two, sorry.
They have been at different frequencies. Some is like day-to-day, a teacher just talking to a student, that's assessment data also. But these Linkit assessments are three times a year, so that we're not waiting and getting surprised by any end-of-year data.
So when you're doing the IDEA, the individual plans, what are you doing with your IEP students? Because you're talking about sharing information with the teachers, with the assessment information, but where does the child's study team and the parents and their IEP accommodations and modifications come into play with this testing and with the discussion as to how their individualized education's going to play out moving forward? Because I hear the word increased rigor a lot, but that's not a very special ed-friendly word for some of our students who have executive function issues. So where, where, what do we do with our special ed students?
I hear the question, I think maybe underneath the question is, how are we making sure that our children's individualized education plans are applied throughout the entire school day, including the IDEA block? Is that?
Yes, and just in general with the instruction, day-to-day instruction.
So that in majority of the classes, there are two teachers, so there's a special ed specialist that's supporting what's happening in the classroom and ensuring that the IEPs are administered and delivered specifically for those individual students. The IEP is the framework that drives what's going on for that student in the classroom, but in terms of equitable access, every single student is supposed to be given access to the curriculum. They're expected to perform on these assessments as their peers. So they are administered the same assessments with the accommodations, because these are district-wide assessments, those assessments aren't modified. The other assessments, the quizzes, the conference notes, the exit tickets, reading midterms, all those assessments are modified, but the actual Linkit Form A, B, and C, or end-of-unit assessments are not modified, but they have provided the accommodations they would typically get on the NJSLS. So that way, we have a real measure on how these individual students with their IEP accommodations are performing against the standards.
So they're getting their accommodations, but they're not getting their modifications?
On those particular assessments, yes.
Okay.
Those are district-wide assessments, so actually that's following the Individualized Education Act, that students only receive accommodations on those particular assessments.
But you're doing these three times a year?
Those particular ones are three times a year, and end-of-unit assessments are more frequently than that.
So then, okay, so then we're, so then we're talking more frequently than three times a year. So then their end-of-the-unit assessments, they're not getting their modifications on as well?
No, they're getting their accommodations, but the assessment itself, the tool is not modified.
So then you're not offering alternative assessments for unit tests for special ed students who are not able to really?
We're offering them their accommodations, but their test themselves, the content of the test is not modified.
So I'm just, I'm just a little concerned or confused. So if you have a student that's not able to perform on grade level, then are they being forced to take an assessment that's on grade level if they're struggling?
They are taking the assessment that measures that grade level standard, because that's the grade that they're in.
So then they're, and so they're only getting their accommodations, they're not getting their modification?
On that particular assessment, yes, they're getting the accommodation.
So on every unit test?
On end-of-unit assessments, those particular assessments that are district-wide.
And why was that decision made?
That's actually the law.
Well, you're calling standardized tests now your unit tests, correct?
No, they're district-wide tests and standardized tests are the same thing.
So you're doing district-wide testing?
Right, at the end-of-unit exams, and the Linkit are end-of-unit.
At the end of every unit.
Yes, they're standardized.
And students who have an IEP are only getting accommodations, not modifications?
The students, the modification means we're changing the assessment.
But you're saying they're not getting a modification?
They're getting the same assessment as their peers, but they're getting the accommodations, extended time, read aloud, whatever those accommodations are.
So they're getting the same test, we're getting an accommodation to that test, but they're not getting a modified test?
They're not getting a different assessment, no.
So every, every month, their test, their unit test, their monthly math test is, does not have modifications?
I don't know how frequently. Again, they, kids don't.
That's what I'm asking you.
I'm trying to, I'm trying, so kids don't get modified anything, the tool is modified. There's a difference between accommodations and modifications.
Frank, hold on.
Modification means is that you're changing the assessment.
I don't know if you're understanding my question. So I'm going to, so you had said that it was law that standardized testing, that students don't receive a modification, that they receive an accommodation. So now I'm asking you, how frequently are you having students have these standardized assessments where, so how often are your special ed students receiving math tests where they're getting their modifications versus all your standardized unit math tests?
It depends on how frequently the teacher's administering quizzes, tests.
But all your unit tests, you're using as standardized tests now, so therefore only accommodations and not modifications?
I don't think so. I don't, I don't think so.
You guys are, yeah, you guys are talking past each other a little bit?
Yeah.
I believe, and I'm pretty sure if I'm wrong. The Linkit test happens three times a year, right?
Yes.
Those are not, yeah.
That standardized, that Linkit test, it doesn't go to their grade?
Nope.
It's just like, hey, where is everybody in this whole grade?
Right.
And any testing accommodations?
Hold on, let's finish Linkit. Let's just talk about Linkit, right?
I am.
That's all that is. Doesn't go to their grade, it matches up with, I guess, these state assessments or whatever, and doesn't get modified. Three times a year, that's it. That's Linkit.
Okay.
Everything else you're talking about.
The unit test.
So you're talking about, we finished the unit on long division, or whatever, right? We finished the unit on complex sentences. At that point, if there's an end-of-unit test?
So end-of-unit tests, midterms, finals, standardized assessments that are administered to everyone at the same grade, at the same time, depending on where they are, and aren't modified, means there isn't an alternative assessment. It's the same assessment, it's a standardized assessment. All the other tests, quizzes, whatever activities that are going on are modified for that student. These particular assessments, end-of-unit assessments, it's not like the end of the, it'd be the end of the division unit, so you have a six-week cycle.
This is what I'm saying, Dr. Colligan, I think you're talking over people's heads right now. So I think you need to define what end-of-unit test means.
Well, that would be the end of the unit based on whatever tool that you're using. There's so many different ones, I can't really specify one. So if you're, if you're doing fractions, and you do an end-of-unit assessment as you've done with all your fractions, so you spent eight weeks on this unit, you're doing it, it's a standard-based assessment based on the standards, and you're measuring where each student is against those particular standards, that's a test that everyone's administered in the sixth grade. So every student who would sit for the NJSLS is taking that assessment, so you know where they're performing against the standard, so you could instruct yourself and inform your instruction. So that same student, all those students are all sitting for the NJSLS without modifications, only accommodations. So we would be doing them a disservice if we gave them a different test and then gave them the other test.
Right.
They would be ill-prepared to take it. So we give them that test, knowing that they may struggle with some questions on the test.
Does the end-of, that end-of-unit assessment, does that go to their grade or not?
Again, it's taking in a modification, so if they're going to use it.
No, but it's very stressful when you have a child with severe learning disability, or a child who has limited joint attention, who has ADHD, and month after month, or unit after unit, they have to struggle through these tests, because they're special ed IEPs, and their special ed needs aren't really being serviced, because the data for the assessments that's being gathered doesn't take into consideration their ability, their disability, and their emotional state after they complete these tests that they struggle on. But thank you for answering my question, that's what I really wanted clarification on, because it doesn't seem very special ed friendly, but thank you.
But again, I would, I would speak to your case manager and the teachers, they could probably explain it better than I could in a five-minute conversation.
Patty Demorowski, forty-two, no, not forty-two, that's my work address, Ten O'Prode Road in Caldwell. I am one of those mothers with a child who she was talking about. My child comes home stressed out after every test, telling me he failed it. He may or may not be able to do that math concept, but I'll tell you this, he can't read a paragraph, and then five sentences, and then digest it all, and then perform that math concept, and what are we really accomplishing by standing here, not modifying tests, which, mind you, up until this year, were modified for these children? This is the first year that end-of-unit tests have not been modified. So I, as a parent of a child with an IEP, was very shocked to find out that my child was not getting modified tests. And then, even when we're doing the accommodations, these teachers don't have a place for these kids to go for small groups. So you're, you're giving accommodations in the back of the classroom where every other student is. So how are we serving these students, and why was this change made? It's the biggest question, because we are doing a complete disservice to these children who have issues processing and not taking into account their needs. I understand the need for data, and I understand what you're trying to do, but what you are doing to this, these children, is causing more stress, and having kids coming out of school frustrated, anxious, upset, and walking home feeling deflated about what happened in school, because there's assessment after assessment after assessment. So how do you plan on addressing and helping these students that now we're causing these issues for? And I think as, like, the parents of the children with IEPs, that's one of our bigger concerns. And why weren't we notified that past last year that none of these tests were going to be modified? Because up until last year, these end-of-unit tests were modified.
Do you have any other questions, so I could try to answer them all in time?
Why did you make the change?
Well, I, the change was.
And what are you going to do for the kids?
The change was made because, again, the law requires us to administer the test, that's for one reason, and the other really reason is not providing them.
So what's the change between last year and this year, then, that it changed with the law so much, and why weren't we notified?
I can't tell you why the law wasn't implemented with fidelity like it should have been, I can only tell you where it is right now, that the students should have been provided the accommodations on these. the accommodations on these assessments, but not giving modified assessments. So, you know, from an instructional perspective, we're doing them a bigger disservice by giving them different materials, different instruction, not preparing them as they transition from second to third to fourth to fifth to sixth to seventh. The more we have less expect...
So by giving a child who has a processing delay, a math test that they may be able to perform the math function on, but not necessarily process two paragraphs of thi... You're telling me that reading that math test and processing that and understanding that is going to be really fully evaluating those math skills? What if they can't process all that writing prior to it?
Then, then we need to give them the tools and provide them the services and supports that they can do that. And unless we actually...
But you never do that. That's what I think is...
Miss, you can't, Miss, you're not, you can come up afterwards. And unless we actually administer the assessments that are giving them grade-level experiences, we won't know or challenge them to move further along. So the more we decide to give them less, then the expectation on them will be less as they transition up, the gap becomes greater and greater and greater. And then when they're in high school and they're struggling or they're exiting high school and they're struggling because we never gave them challenging opportunities in school, then we, then we as educators are doing them a disservice because we're not preparing them for getting a job, going to college, or, you know, having a career. And that's our, our job is to do that. I know it's a long way away when kids are in second grade and they're struggling with a math problem, and we have a hard time understanding why we're doing that. And we're doing that is because we're helping us inform our instruction to know what the areas of weakness are and how we can teach them mitigation strategies to support them as they transition to third grade, to fourth grade, to middle school, to high school, and become independent adults, and they can advocate for themselves.
But if you are getting all of this information from all these other places, why is it that we, and I'm sure you're not gonna answer, you're just gonna go back to the law, so I'll step back after this and allow others to ask a question. Why can the tests that are not gonna affect the grades of the children with IEP, the end-of-unit tests, why can they not be modified to work with the children with their IEPs at their level? I know that you're not gonna answer that, and that's fine, I'm gonna step back and ask my question.
Just to share a bit about math, I think we're talking, we don't really have end-of-unit assessments traditionally in some of our other subject areas, so I think we're kind of talking a lot about math here. But our math curriculum and program is full of all other kinds of assessment methods. The end-of-unit assessment is just one piece. The entire program is built on like assessing students at work. So teachers have these checklists where they're watching kids solve problems, they're thinking about how they work with a partner, they're able to look at actually how students solve particular problems and different workbook pages, and those pages sometimes are modified. So although we're presenting tonight on this sort of, a lot of summative diagnostic data, and that tends to be more, you know, standards-based and our format, some of our format or traditional, I should say, our formative assessment is just as valuable in informing conversations with kids about how they're doing, progress to families, and giving kids feedback on their learning, and it's a really important piece of how kids are doing. So while we do have end-of-unit assessments, that's just, that's not like the only grade, that's just one piece. And all the other work is just as important, how kids think and ask questions and work with their partners, all of that also matters. So I don't want to overemphasize, we're presenting tonight on this data, but I don't want to overemphasize it as our only data point, just one, one piece of the puzzle.
Hi there. My name's Teri Greenlee. I live at 35 Woodrow Place in West Caldwell. And, sorry, I took a note on my phone, which is what I want to look at here. So, one thing I just want to say before I ask a question too, is that I feel like our teachers have a lot on their plates, and so I would like to know what the administration is gonna do to help the teachers get this information to us because it somewhat feels like it's one more thing being added to them and they already have a lot going on. And I am one of those parents that tries to reach out a lot, but also feels incredibly guilty because I know my child is one of, you know, 19, one of 22, but I also need to get especially one of my children some, some help. And I agree with what was said earlier, that you go from the elementary school to the middle school, and it's like, whoa. I mean, the middle school, the amount of information that comes home, not only from the teachers, but being able to look on Genesis and see comments about your child's work, where they were lacking, it's amazing, but it's also very disappointing that it takes seven years to get to that point in order to have that kind of feedback from teachers and from the district. So I do want to just voice that. And I would like to know where in all of this, though, when we're communicating with parents, where we look at this data and the help that we're gonna give students realistically. To be quite honest, I have a child that has been struggling and has been identified for years as struggling, and I have been told now repeatedly that until a child is two years behind on a reading level, really, there's not interventions that have to be done, which I find to be really upsetting because as you get older, the more you get behind in your reading, as one of the other parents said here, especially with math problems, it starts to trickle into all of these other areas. So I would like to know, like how we as a district stop saying that to parents and actually really start giving student support so that we don't let them get to be two years behind. And with that, particularly with reading levels, I would like to ask, when we send home assessments for our children, that if they're not gonna be sent home via electronically, when you are sending them home in papers, put them in sealed envelopes? Because when children can see where they're at academically and they can read that they're at, you know, a reading, a grade level below where they should be, it blows their self-confidence out of the water. So for children especially that are working hard to get that paperwork in their folder and to read it out loud to their parents, it's devastating for a child. So, I know I said a lot, so I guess my real question is really, how are we supporting our teachers to get that information, especially at the elementary level? And really, how are we realistically supporting our students to get them up to speed with these things?
Sure. I'm happy to try to tackle both those questions, Teri. So the first one is, we are trying to take advantage of using Lincoln because it's something that they're already using, teachers are already entering at the elementary level, a lot of data in there. So it is providing some instant results to families, so the teachers aren't grading the end-of-unit assessments, for example, they're already there. So that's like one less thing the teachers, it's one thing off their plates in terms of assessment. Other things like reading levels, we created these level-based checklists so they can share those information with families at certain intervals across the year in ways that didn't require too much additional, like writing, for example. So we're trying to make it as manageable as possible and making sure that the assessments they're already doing and they've already been doing or already grading are going home at predicted intervals, that you have the kind of updates and progress you want to, you know, that you're talking about, that you're getting from middle school. So you can have more up-to-date information about how your kids are doing. The next thing is about intervention and supporting kids. So the way that the multi-tiered system of support work, and you think about our response to intervention, the first level of intervention happens at the classroom, and actually the second level too, it's the classroom teacher. So how are we supporting the classroom teacher in being the very best interventionist with his or her own students in, in his or her own classroom? And that is through supporting them with evidence-based reading strategies, which is through our work through Phonics First, we have targeted, a targeted online intervention program called Mind Play for very particular students would really benefit from something like that, but matching them with the appropriate intervention, equipping teachers with other small group strategies that are research-based, like guided reading, which is a new strategy for us this year. And also making time for kids, so you have your reading workshop time and you have your small groups, maybe you get to two groups a day. How do you help the kids who need more than your traditional workshop can accommodate? That's what we built in that idea block. That's the time where teachers have like another time in the day to target interventions for kids. So you have your classroom teacher and then your, in your, in your regular classroom instruction, and along with that intervention period, being the first line of defense for intervention. On top of that, we quadrupled our intervention team in terms of reading, reading intervention from last year or two years ago to this year. So we have been working on our, increasing our staffing also to provide additional layers of intervention. So the idea is, we have, we have time and support and structures for teachers to be the first line of intervention in addition to some other supports, like SMART Support, which we're continuing to do this year and hoping to run a similar program next summer.
Wonderful. And just with SMART Support, that was one of my questions too, and since you brought it up. Is there going to be changes to the SMART program this year that parents receive ongoing communication?
Yes.
Because last year, there was zero information sent home about a child's progress, and if your child was in the SMART program and you did not see their report card reflect all the work that they'd done, and again, it was very disheartening, and it, to be quite honest, did not give some, I'm gonna speak for myself, it did not give my family a lot of faith in the program because there was literally zero feedback the entire year about how our child was being assessed, what was happening, what was being taught in there, what could have been reinforced at home, was it being reinforced in the classroom? I mean, is there going to be a better communication system this year?
We're replicating what we did in the summer through our SMART Summer Program, where we provided families with like interim progress reports in the subject areas that they were learning. So we are, that is part of the program for this year, for sure.
As well as paid time for teachers to do that work.
Awesome.
Yes. And also just to share about SMART Support, extending some flexibility for teachers as well. It's a really long, hard grind as a teacher throughout a school day without a pandemic, and so we're trying to also make sure that teachers who are interested have flexible options to provide SMART Support to students. They can do it virtually if that works well for the family, or on a weekend if that works well for the family. So we acknowledge how hard the teachers are working.
Yes.
We're working really hard to provide them with the training and the professional development and the time to do as much as we possibly can, given all that is ahead of us. So thank you for the feedback you had provided.
Awesome.
Last month, we even put that into the posting, based on feedback that you and others had provided around wanting to have more progress monitoring and communication around SMART Support. And so that is something of promising practice from the summer. We saw great results. Kids grew, how many reading levels within six weeks it was like?
At least one reading level, yeah.
Yeah. And so we want to replicate that successful practice and partnering with you all is a major part of it.
Awesome. And taking care of our teachers. Just say that one more time.
Yeah, all of it.
Thank you.
Yep. Just to explain, Ms. Fisher and Ms. Jacobs are actually leading a webinar right now around some of these questions about Lincoln, so feel free if you feel like you want to stay and ask questions, but that's why they're leaving, not any other reason. They're right next door.
Hi, I just wanted to make a statement because I do believe that parents know what's best for their children, and I hope that the Board of Education could include the parents in some of the decisions that they're making in regards to their child's education. Because I do find it almost offensive to say that as a parent, asking that our child's emotional development also be taken into consideration to make a statement that we're at, doing them a disservice by, by feeling hesitant or by not wanting to have them sit for repeated exams that are above their intellectual or cognitive abilities. And I just, I just, you know, found that comment a little disheartening. And for many years, I've been told by physicians that I shouldn't be comparing my child to other children and that every child has their own strengths and weaknesses. And being told that they have to sit for repeated standardized tests where they're being evaluated and they're not being put in a position where they could excel or where they could shine, it's just, it's just a bad place for education right now, and I just wanted that on the record.
I can speak to that comment personally. The social-emotional well-being of all of our children has been number one. Tonight's presentation is intended to provide transparency around where we are in our kids' learning currently and what we're trying to put in place academically. I do want to clarify, a couple, maybe 20 minutes ago, I was just trying to clarify. So for Lincoln, the purpose of Lincoln is to help us in a no-stakes environment for our kids. They don't, this doesn't go towards their grades, to be able for us to monitor and make sure that we're doing everything we can to provide equitable access to grade level standards for all children. If a child has in his or her IEP testing accommodations, those are, they have to be implemented, just the way they would for NJ SLA. So I want to clarify that. If there are issues around that, definitely please reach out to me about specific circumstances.
I would, if you have specific questions about IEP implementation, what the impact of end-of-unit assessments, the several that you administer, the Form A, Form B, or Form C in Lincoln, or finals or midterms that aren't necessarily being modified, meaning an alternative assessment, they're getting the same assessment as everyone else, I would reach out to Ms. Madera, she's the Director of Special Services. She could explain it better than I could. She is the person in charge of those things. So if I explained it in articulately, I apologize. I was doing my best to try to explain it tonight, so.
I'd also say for the end-of-unit assessments, the administrators, we've already been looking to see, based on the standards that are intended to be assessed in end-of-unit assessments, if there are too many questions or on the same standard for all kids, we're looking to reduce that. The intent is to make sure that we're doing everything we can to know what our kids need from us and to make sure you know where your children stand, both in terms of grade level standards and then their IEP goals also. So as Dr. Conklin said, if there are individual questions about specific cases, we definitely would want to know about them and speak with you about them. But hopefully that helps clarify a little bit about Lincoln and testing accommodations. Thank you.
Thanks.
Sure. The superintendent makes the following recommendations to the Board of Education. Motion to approve item numbers one through eight on this evening's agenda under Curriculum and Technology.
Do we have a second?
I will second it.
Brian, will you take a roll, please?
Yes. Mr. Diambola?
Yes, to everything except I have to abstain from number six because I'm worked there.
Noted, noted. Mr. Elko?
Yes.
Ms. Grasso?
Yes.
Mr. Cippeletti?
Yes.
A four-zero motion carried.
Okay, for personnel?
Under personnel, the superintendent makes the following personnel recommendations to the Board of Education. Motion to approve certificated staff, item letter A through I, and non-certificated staff, item letters A through C on this evening's agenda under personnel.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Brian, will you take a vote, please?
Yes. Mr. Diambola?
Yes.
Mr. Elko?
Yes.
Ms. Grasso?
Yes.
Mr. Cippeletti?
Yes.
Four-zero motion carried.
And finance and facilities?
Yeah, motion to approve items number one through 14 on this evening's agenda under finance and items number one and two under facilities.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Brian, will you take the vote, please?
Yes. Mr. Diambola?
Yes.
Mr. Elko?
Yes.
Ms. Grasso?
Yes.
Mr. Cippeletti?
Yes.
Four-zero motion carried.
Great. And for extra credit, Mr. Elko, policy, please?
Yes, motion to approve item number one on this evening's agenda under policy.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Brian, will you take the vote?
Yes. Mr. Diambola?
Yes.
Mr. Elko?
Yes.
Ms. Grasso?
Yes.
Mr. Cippeletti?
Yes.
A four-zero motion carried.
Okay, now we're going to move into any other questions outside of agenda. If anybody has those, please come up to the microphone.
Good evening. Sue Callahan, teacher at James Caldwell High School, also the president of the Teachers Association. I'm not sure if this is the right form to do, to eulogize Marie, but I would be remiss, I think, if I didn't say something on behalf of the teachers. So I hope you will allow me just to make a public statement. The CWCEA would like to recognize and thank Marie Langfrank for her years of service and true dedication to the children of Caldwell West Caldwell. Her commitment to this district will live on in the works of both the Caldwell West Caldwell Education Foundation and the Board of Education. She was a true champion for education who will be greatly missed.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, before we close, we will be sharing with both the progress and the patch, as well as posting on the website, the process for filling the vacancy on the Board of Ed. At a high level, the process will be the following, but again, more specifics and details will be there. We are going to ask anybody who's interested in that spot to send an email to Ms. Ryan here at the Board of Ed offices, basically to include their resume, a summary of their activities, both in support of the school and our communities, as well as a third piece, which would be a summary as to why they wanna be on the Board of Ed. The Board of Ed, or this group, will then assess all of those, and we will narrow that down to two or three participants who we will ask to come in for an interview in our private session of our first meeting in December, and we will make a decision at the end of that meeting and basically vote on that replacement for, unfortunately, the vacant seat on the second meeting of December. Okay? So any interested party should send a note to Ms. Ryan, and all the email information will be posted on the Board website, as well as sent to the Progress and the Patch probably With that, if there are no other questions or comments, I'm gonna ask for a motion to adjourn.
Can I just say one thing very quickly?
Yes, please do.
I'm so sorry, I didn't catch your name back there, the woman with the red pants. I'm so sorry. I didn't catch your name, so I don't mean to be.
It is Lisa.
Lisa?
Of course.
Okay, Lisa. I just, I do wanna invoke Marie in this moment right now. As a board, Marie would always remind us that we always have to think of the children as their parents do, and I'd just like to take this opportunity to say I thank you for your comments tonight. We hear your concerns, and in Marie's honor and memory always, we always look at the children as you do. So please know, you see a lot of facts and figures and percentages, but we do look at them like they're children. Their social and emotional well-being is first and foremost to all of us up here. I know I can speak on behalf of all of us, including the administration. So I just wanna just let you know that, okay? Please don't be disheartened or frustrated by looking at a lot of numbers and facts and figures. We know that they're children, we're parents, and we care, okay? So I just want you to know that, I don't want you to leave here feeling disheartened tonight, and I just feel compelled to just say that in Marie's honor and memory and know that she's sending that to me at this moment.
Thank you, Julia. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Do you have a second?
Second it.
A motion has been made by Ms. Grasso and seconded by Mr. Diambola. Upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Caldwell, West Caldwell Board of Education meeting is now adjourned at 8:15 PM. Thank you for coming, everybody.
Ayes?
Aye.
Nays? Standards? Motion carried? Thank you.